I call this meeting the county commissioners to order. Please join us for a class.
Glad to lead this meeting. We do the flag in the United States of America. To the love of which stands one nation, under God. And in this, and this is true.
Good afternoon, everybody. We will begin with the minutes of our September 17 meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? We have a motion by Dale second by Tracy to approve the minutes of the September 17 meeting. All in favor, sign the Thomas saying, aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. First up today is Kelly Van Meter with a 144 request.
Hi, guys. So, I've got some little packets for you. Because I do have 144s, but I've added to my little show here today. So, this here's a proposal that WTH sent me. This is an edit, there's an edited copy that I kept, but it's a, what it is, is they're going to want to use grant money. So, I was talking to Dale and I have yet to meet with Jolisa on that. And then here's the other stuff that we're talking about here real quick today. So, I'll do the 144s first. So, I brought back Mark Gibson. He used to be a full-time dispatcher at our location and then he came back to work at Union County full-time and so I took, he asked for a part-time position back at our department, part-time, but his job at Union has kept him not really able to pull a shift much at the job. So, I'm not letting him go, so to speak, but he's just not somebody who's helping us right at this moment. Kyle McCoy, he also is a part-time employee. He got a job full-time Wayne County Dispatch. I'm not letting him go, but again, within the last month, they really have, those two have not really been able to pull shifts because of their full-time duties over to other jobs that they have. So, I've hired, I've hired three people. Ellie Ford, she is a dispatcher from Franklin County. And she, they have skill in there, they have everything that we have, except for our radios she'll need to learn. And then she'll have to learn our protocols and our SOPs and things that we do here and not, you know, from where she was at. So, I'm going to say she's going to be an easy train, but I mean, it's still going to be her learning what we do with our agencies here. I hired a Joy Gabbard. She is an RN. Joy at this time, though, she's not doing her RN program. She's babysitting for her grandkids, which she just stepped back to do that. So, she came in and wanted to do a part-time at our place and I'm allowing her, so I feel secure with her information too. So, there's that, Joy Gabbard. And then I hired Peyton Torres. He's 20 years old. He has done some dabbling in dispatch. His future goal, he's 20 years old, is to be a police officer, so this is going to be one of his steps as he goes. So, he interviewed really well. And again, he's already done some dispatching for Oxford, so I'm taking him on as well. So, those are my three new hires. Should I just let you do that first and then go on to the next? So, those are my hires and I'm going to do my 144s today.
Kelly, all three of these are part-timers?
Yes, they're all part-time.
Okay.
Exactly which three?
Ellie Ford.
Ellie, okay.
Joy and Peyton.
Joy Gabbard.
Joy Gabbard.
And then Peyton Torres, T-O-R-R-E-S.
All right, got it.
Move a motion to approve hiring a part-time.
I'll second that.
All three.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale second by Tracy.
Thank you.
To approve the 144 request for 911 for the hire of Ellie Ford, Joy Gabbard, and Peyton Torres. Correct?
Yep.
Any further questions? All in favor, sign the Thomas saying, aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. All right. Now, what do you get next?
Okay, so this next one, the proposal that I showed you, so this is a WTH, it's done, it's with the mapping, the GIS mapping that we have for the county. So, Paul Owens, who I, who is my liaison for this, he sent this to me. In the email, it tells you that there are absolutely a lot of grants for this type of upgrade for Fayette County to use, to do the upgrade. In this proposal, it tells you that we do, we are going to need this upgrade. So, what I brought this to you for is just to let you know that I've got it. Mine's an edited copy. This came in the 30th and that one's the 13th, I think. And then he just redid it and edited. He said it was an edited version, but it's around the same thing. So, what I'm letting you know is that I'm going to say that since he wants us to use a grant money, I'm going to let Jolisa have a look at this too with me and then she can go from here to apply for the grants and or look. Is that something, what else would you suggest? I mean...
Okay, first of all, I haven't seen it.
Okay.
But this, this matter is within the WTH GIS service that we subscribe to.
Right.
Now, here, here's where your needs and the surveyor's office needs may overlap here. Dale, are you aware of any of this?
No.
Are you, do you deal with Paul Owens?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's who sent me the proposal. It's layering. He's going to update layering in the program. I did read briefly over it, but I haven't had a chance to do the new one, which I don't know why I didn't say you have this, because I can just run another copy. So, I'll give you the updated version. So, what do you want me to do? Wait for this or go to Jolisa? Because I don't want time to be of the essence to run out for a grant application, if there is such a thing. You know, grants do expire. Now, he just did send this, so I don't think that he's going to let us have an expired grant, because he tells you that there's grants that are there.
Okay. Can you first explain what this proposal is that...
They're going to update...
How does it affect your department?
Okay, so when we get a 911 call, okay, GIS is sitting right there. And so, it plots on the map the address of the caller. In that address, it will also map if there's a fire hydrant there, if there are gas lines. There's a whole gamut of things that that one location, when you get a call, will tell you. And a lot of it is just for dispatchers to be layering. If this accident, if an accident happens at a location and we've got injuries and a pole's been snapped or a gas line, then it tells you there's a fire hydrant. It will even tell you that there's a gas line there for additional information for a dispatcher to give out to fire departments and/or the crew heading to that scene. There's a wealth of information in the mapping that we use at 911, that we, for the layers and stuff.
I'm sure, Al, and this upgrade to GIS can be made through grant funding?
Paul Owens, the liaison, he tells me in the email and telling me that there are grants to pay for this. So, he sent the proposal and I think in that packet you'll see, I think he's got a $29,000 figure.
Yes.
What I mean is, there's some change on that, but... So, that being said, my question to you with this upgrading of the mapping is something with the grants to go through Jolisa. I know he sent it to me and that's all fine, but I'll just have to go down to Jolisa and have her, we'll look at it together and then she can reach out for what type of grant that Paul Owens is talking about for the mapping. That was my thought.
Okay. What I would suggest, personally, I'm okay with the grant application.
Okay.
If that actually happens, if there's, if there's any, if there's any layers to be added that could also benefit the surveyor's office...
Okay.
At the same time, you know, all this, have all this information shared, make GIS more useful to the surveyor's office.
Right.
That would kill, kind of kill, kill two birds with one stone, wouldn't it?
Yes, I agree. So, I wrote my note to, when I talked to Jolisa, to ask her on the benefit as well with the grant app for surveyor's office information as well. Which is there any specific information that the surveyor's office needs on the map that I need to make sure it's included on the, on the upgrade?
I really don't know what, I don't know what I'm going to say we're even benefit. I mean, it's going to be on board. A lot of times, these internal offices have their own stuff that doesn't really apply. I mean, ours is just property and all that.
Well, this is a deal. So, when we get a 911 call, and it applies.
They can put there's a layer if we want to put it on, just put it on and then...
We get the property card too.
Yeah.
Of ownership.
Yeah.
Rentals. And I didn't know if that was something...
If they want to add a layer to ours where we could just pop on there, we need to know something.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that probably be helpful.
Okay.
And I would think for the benefit of the fire departments, it would be good on that to have those bridges that have weight limits on that GIS.
Okay.
Then they would know that if they need to reroute.
Bridges that have weight limits.
That would be the big thing, I would think that would be very helpful.
Well, I mean, it's something to ask, if that's, I don't care, since I'm going to go over, I'll have some other information to help to see if that'll be something that we can include.
Yeah, because how many of those bridges? We have a lot.
Yeah.
How many of those bridges did we have that we had to put special signage on? You might remember that, Derek. It was a lot.
Well, I mean, Paul Owens is pretty good about, to me, because at times I've been, he's been in the office, he's the one that came and updated the Google sites a year or so ago. He came in and upgraded all the Council Google sites. And then he pretty much, if you ask him something, which I can reach out and ask him if that can be done through the grant before I even ask Jolisa and go from there, because he's a wealth of information. I mean, he's been doing this, I know, I've known Paul Owens to be doing this since 2011. I mean, I think he's been around forever on this mapping stuff. So, I'll ask him and see.
Yeah, because I would think that would be included in public, that's a public safety thing.
Okay, I'll just ask, since I'm, since he sent that to me, then I'll just reach back out and ask him to see if he can give me some information on it. Because it's not going to hurt. So, anything else on the proposal?
Well, Jolisa Bates is going to be your first talk.
Yeah, that's where, and I was going to let you know that that was what I was going to do, but I wanted to also let you know what it was, that I was going to go, not that I really get permission for grant writing, but I wanted to let you guys know what was coming down through the upgrade for the proposal.
Yeah, and I, right now, we don't know if that's going to be a matching grant and if so, what percentage is or anything.
Yeah, the way that my, and I should have wrote or printed that email off, the way the email sounded to me is it was a 100% grant with no match, is how, how he wrote it to me. But I will look at it again and we'll go with Jolisa and see where you'd go.
Okay.
That's, that's all I know to do too, so...
Well, either you or Jolisa let us know, would you please?
Yep, sure will. I sure will.
Comes up with that?
So, that's just for your...
Do you want to give, Kelly, authorize Kelly to pursue the application for this?
Yep. I need a motion. I'll move a motion if we give her permission to get with Jolisa and work on this grant.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to authorize Kelly Van Meter to pursue a grant for WTH GIS upgrade through grant administrator Jolisa Bates.
Looking at Jeff looked at that and make sure it's what we need.
I gave him the one that said it's the 30th of September. That's the new updated version. Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any further questions? All in favor, sign the Thomas saying, aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Keep us in the loop on this.
I will. And I've got one more thing here, a couple, well, one more couple. Okay, so, our radio system's wonderful, but, and I know you're not the money people, but I wanted to keep you, I wanted to give you some information. So, I had my ECA, my radio guy come this past week to put in the part that I paid for and so they did that and did, did some other things. And so, it was brought to my attention by my radio person that IPSEC, which is the state police towering system, has been not too happy with us at Fayette County, because we are using every resource, just about every, there's four talk channels on our tower out here at mine. And Fayette County is using at least three of those resources. Each time we dispatch, you know, two groups, EMS and a county fire department, it's taking two spots. So, if we dispatch EMS, city fire, and a county fire together, three, that's taking three spots and nobody else can get into the tower. So, IPSEC has made it, made us aware that they are, and I got email here from IPSEC, making us aware that we need to create a different talk group for this and not do, use those resources, because that tower, you know, priority is state police, DNR's got priority on it. They also mentioned that if we get too busy here, because we are an agency, unlike state police that takes the law calls and they're everywhere, we are a group of people who have seven agencies we dispatch for. So, it's a constant use of those resources on the tower. So, they're asking us nicely to find a different way to not use the resources like that. So, that different way would be a different talk group type thing, which it doesn't change the way we dispatch to any extent. It will change how some of us, how some of them will be sent, but they'll still get the same information. So, the, the email that she sent back, 100% agree that we move all the fire departments to one talk group for paging and then assign fire ground talk groups as needed. So, what we would do, each fire department has their own tone, so we would go ahead on one channel or one talk group, whoever we're sending out, we would page them on the one talk group and then when they mark en route, they would go back to their regular, their own talk group. It's called a talk group. So, that one page for everybody, like I'm going to say, all the fire departments, that would be four, and EMS included, would be on that one paging group. And then after we page them out, then we can separate them into their own little talk groups that were not using that resource. Because when we page, we use a tower resource. So, if we're paging three people, we're using three resources. But if we page it one on one talk, only using one resource. And IPSEC's saying that that's 100% what they were asked to do. So, you know, just like it says ISP puts out a dispatch to one of their units at the same time, the Council cites at the capacity. So, state police can't even dispatch their own units, because Fayette County is using every resource on that tower and it's aggravating to them. Now, they're not sending any kind of hate mail. They're just telling me nicely that we need to get ourselves on a different path of how we tone our groups and not use those resources. And we do have that ability by the fact that this, I've made them, I've got with Jane and I'm going to do a transfer out of my own budget, not county general, to pay for the $10,133 item. It's another radio channel that's going to support what we need to do with the one talk group, the one straight page and get off of the town there. I mean, we're not going to get off of it. Basically, state police, IPSEC is telling us to do something else. And we kind of, we did, as a group of agencies, we did realize this to an extent. When this new radio system came in and we all went 800, which was fine, we were kind of, you know, we just, we were kind of learning it as a, as a group of everybody having it in their possession now, because not everybody used to have, it used to be police departments. And now, the state and everybody around us and us, we went below, went to 800s. So, it's a trial and error thing. I hate to say it that way, because we do have to pay a little bit of money, but again, it's still, we're just a trial and error. We're tweaking it up to where now we can do our own thing and not be a burden to state police, IPSEC. And like I said, they're, they're not mad. They sent a very nice email saying that if we get onto a different talk group, she, they're concerned too, that if we had, if there was a major tragedy, that we would keep continuing to get busy tones and not be able to get out to our agencies and somebody's needing us. And vice versa with state. If they are trying to dispatch one of their units to a high priority call and we are taking over the entire tower, then they can't get their units out either. When the radio guy was downstairs doing the new unit that he put in, he noticed that one of the groups that we used a week ago, it hit the Pepper Town Tower, because there was no room on this tower to, to be dispatched out even from here. So, we're even ruining our own resources when we do that. And it, and it doesn't take a long time to recover, but when you tone out the agencies and then you wait for that tone and then you're going to talk right after that tone, okay, it takes a minute for that system to revive itself especially. And then you're also taking the chance when that tone stops and you're going to talk, that somebody else slipped in there ahead of you and then some of your agencies do not hear your traffic, because you, you missed the window to get in. Because 800s, how they explain it is, is like a phone booth, one at a time. You can't, you can't talk on top of each other. It's a one at a time person. So, basically, this new item that I'm going to purchase and go to council with tonight, it's going to alleviate that issue that the IPSEC's asking me to fix. So, there's that explanation. And then the other item that on here for $450, I have that money in my account somewhere. This is a firewall prevention of spam and hacking the radio system. It's a firewall and a remote connection circuit, so that, my, my radio company is in Bloomington, so if there's a, a big thing happening that they can remote in to help us, they can. Because I want to tell you, one call to them, and I don't have to do it ever, I mean, the night that the receiver was struck by lightning, I had to call them. I didn't know what had happened. Nobody had any radios, so we called them in. That bill alone was like 600 bucks. So, just having this, that 450 is going to cover one call for them to physically show up in the night or whenever we need them. So, if they can remote in. And then I was talking to Dale Munson and I'll get with Michael King and make sure that he doesn't need to, I'm sure he'll need to know what will go on, but, because we just, have we upgraded the firewalls? Has he done firewall upgrade yet? Because I know we purchased the firewall month that he had purchased it, because state needed it to be stronger. Anyway...
I don't know where he stands with that work right now.
Okay.
But I know that we did...
I haven't talked to him either. I don't know, you know, I haven't really reached out yet to him, so I'll have to see what he's doing with that. So, again, I'm asking Commissioner or Council tonight to give me the permission to buy that. And then 450 covers the three years. It's not 450 a year. It's going to cover, the 450's going to cover three years, which to my, like I said, that's way cheaper than one visit from them, if they would have to come physically. Now, that doesn't say that they're never going to have to come physically to the scene, but if they can remote in and, and do it that way, then it's going to be a lot less money overall to spend for them to, to help our system out. So, I'm just letting you be aware of that too, as commissioners, that I'm branching out and doing it on the council tonight. Any questions? I'm done. I know I went over my 144, Jane, and I'm very sorry. Sorry, guys. I didn't know I was going to be the one up here talking forever. I sit in the crowd thinking, come on, people, stop talking. It's a nice thought.
That's all of them looking at you.
Exactly. It's a very nice thought. I'm not being mean, but you know.
Well, it's good you're giving good explanation. Let everybody understand.
Well, and it's such a wealth of information here to, I want to share, I don't, I see Dale a lot, you know, but I don't, I wanted to make sure everybody was in the loop. So, and Dale and I had talked about the part that this, the $10,000 thing that I'm doing. I called him over, because I needed another voice that day when my radio people were there and he was gracious enough to come over and do that for me. I know he hates my texts, but get over here. Not really, I don't, I don't sound emergent, but I'm like, hello, can you come over? And yeah.
I thought you did.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, you need to come over now. Yeah, he said, I will be over. So, Dale never lets me down, but here, everybody now knows what I'm doing and what's going on and so if there's any questions.
I think it makes sense to do the talk groups thing for sure.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to put our...
Well, I mean, we talked about it early in the time we were doing the radio, the radio system. However, we were all new to it. It wasn't anything that we went that far ahead with. And so, now we're here and I, and this is where it's at. So, we're going to have to go forward and do it.
Are you up on all that?
Yeah, I talked to the guy one, said we need this and to listen to him and I think he's a straight shooter.
Yep.
To move forward, we've got to have this to move it, so we can get off, back to the one...
Yep.
Talk group to dispatch and then move over if we need to. But the way I understood it was that they would dispatch, say they dispatch EMS, fire, and a county fire for a wreck, all three of them would be on one channel.
Yes.
The way it is right now, we're all on separate channels.
Yep.
And that's what's tying the tower up.
Yep.
So, we need to move back to just one channel.
Do you ever see a day when all these communications problems finally go away?
You figure, Dale. Anything technology, the day after you buy it, it's obsolete. That's the word, you know?
Look on the bright side, we're not in Marion County. Because they've got about three different 800s...
Oh, absolutely.
...to tie together.
We're really just podunk still, even though it seems like we're branching here, but we're, yeah, we're still on the small scale, Dale.
Yeah, that's the same.
I'm telling you, maybe we all should just get CVs in our car now. Just regular old CVs with a handle.
Well, that's what everybody did back in the 1960s.
Yep, they did. So, okay, so I think I'm done. And like I said, I'll let you know what's going on and I'll talk to Jane and maybe get back next month to see you guys to let you know.
I'll move a motion to approve, I'll move a motion if we approve Kelly to move forward with all three of these, these equipment.
I'll second that.
Pending the council approval.
Okay. I have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy. To approve Kelly Van Meter's request to go to council, for permission to expend funds on the ECS...
It's a, it'll be a radio channel.
ECS upgrade and the ECS, um, Fort Gate 40F.
It's a firewall.
Firewall, okay?
Just think, Dale, I gotta think, I gotta read that too, like, what am I doing? Yeah, I know, Dale. I, I call if I don't know something, I just call and ask.
We'll just call it a firewall upgrade.
There you go.
Is there any further question? All in favor, sign the Thomas saying, aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane.
Thank you, guys. Have a nice day. Sorry, folks. See you on with your day.
For the highway department, Jay Havilam, do you have anything today?
I want to let you know that they are, they have started on 450 this morning.
Really?
They're just about down to, it should be going almost to 700 already. They've been a good time coming down to there. I don't know where they're getting their mix at, but they're getting it to them in a hurry.
I'd say that.
Yeah.
That's three miles.
And we got the rest of 700 done, we're going to move to the other spots. So, we lost three trucks in the process. Three of the old ones. The 2002 Volvo transmission, automatic transmission is, I don't know what's going on, it's stuck in a little gear. It's got all them electronic controls on the side of it, so you'll have to get it in and check it out. And the rest of them are just old age. The main airline for the 19, the 2000 Volvo, it comes off the compressor and runs it back to the, supplies all the air to all the tanks, rusted into and come apart on the way along here. It ain't one thing, it's another. And the other Volvo, though it ain't the Volvo, it's one of the red Freightliners, not Freightliners, KWs. It had, it broke a hydraulic line on the back and they got to fix it too. I don't know whether they got to go up the front or the back or what. We'll get them fixed. But we can work all five trucks while it's running around getting the other spots we can get, so it's not a problem.
Okay, well, well, we can get those up and going eventually. So, you did finish on 700 north?
They finished it, they actually, they finished it and they done the little corner on 650, going back that little curvy hill, because it was, they was going to make a big drop there, so they leveled all that up and went back that way, so they did a pretty good job.
Okay.
And they're going to go over 600 and get them spots over there we got over there and then go around and get some cans that we know need covered. And then they're going to go down and fix the whole train last. And then we got some more cans to put in, so we just have to wait and see.
Okay.
And we haven't been able to do any brush cuts. And we haven't been able to do any brush cuttings. We both brush cuttings down. We're still waiting on the comeback on the new one. They said they're gonna put a new boom on it, but we haven't heard anything out of them since we heard that, so.
I'm sure they'll take their time.
Oh, I'll bet.
Well, I keep hoping one of these days you're gonna bring good news in here.
And I sent you guys up there to check that for... The first one they checked, they found was between 450 and 500, 550 on 900. And it was... It's actually an old... Don't worry, I told you about an old concrete bridge that stuff two cans inside of it.
Oh, yeah.
That's what it is. Its cans are leaking around where they come out of the old bridge because they put it on the outlet end. And you can't do that on a concrete bridge. If they put it on the end, then we'd been better with it. But okay, okay. Fix it up and what, go bring and take it out. I don't know how big the cans gonna take, what, figure it out. So we'll get on with that. That's all I have.
Okay. Anybody got any questions today? All right, well, thanks, Jay. Maintenance Director Josh Jarboe. There you are. Do you have 144 requests?
Yeah, I got a few of them. So there's three of them. All part-time positions, all starting at different dates. One of them is Ryan Brown. He will be part-time custodian over here at the courthouse. Then there's Darcy Moore. She will also be part-time here at the courthouse. Ryan actually started last week. And then Darcy will start as soon as possibly today or tomorrow. I also got another one in there for a Zane Bentley. He's another high school student in the, I guess, the work release or whatever it is program up there. I guess it's not work release. He's only 17, okay? But he will be starting next Monday. I'll be taking him and Gavin, who already works with us, from that same program. And they're going to start on a project that we started two years ago. So they'll be starting on the basement portion of it. So we're actually already got the racks up and all that out of the bank company, which you guys know. So as soon as Zane's here and Dale shows them what to do, we're gonna start reboxing all the files that are down there and preparing them to be transported out there. That'd be the new secure location for that, hopefully. I already warned Zane. Gavin's already been here, so he knows. But I've already warned him what he's getting himself into. And so he seems eager to work until he gets here. I'm sure it might change. But that's the three. The two for the courthouse are gonna be part-time cleaning. I am losing, but not losing, the two current employees. We will keep them on payroll. And then they're off to college when they come back for Christmas breaks or whatever. We've got something worked out where I will find them something to do so they're not driving their mom nuts. So that's something that we're gonna go ahead and do with them too, so. As far as my full-time maintenance positions go, right now, I'm currently... Well, I've got one position that's open. And then I might be having two. I'm not real sure yet. Austin is... He's looking for a better... He had something come on his... Just like landed in his lap and I told him to go for it. So we're gonna see what happens. Hopefully, selfishly, I don't want him to leave, but it's gonna be a great move if it happens for him. So I'll know more next week. But I'll be looking for some full-time positions to be filled as well, so. Other than that, tomorrow morning, I'll be meeting with one of our county council members over at the jail. So all is invited to join us. We're gonna look at the doors and what we can do to resecure them so where I'm not in there with a big sledgehammer beating the crap out of them and getting nowhere, so. Other than that, I've got two bids for boilers. North is going to update theirs. I talked to him today. I think it's out of the timeframe from the last time. So I was just gonna get with, I guess, you with the other guy. Yes, yeah. So that'd be our three. And I already talked to Dale, so we'll discuss that more later. But I believe we should have those two ready to go. They claim they can do it in less than a week, so we'll see.
Do you anticipate us being able to make a decision on the three bids you intend to have by the 15th, right?
Yes.
And we'll take care of that then.
Yep.
And you don't... All the ones you've talked to say it'll be a relatively short
Yeah.
period of time to do it, you know, right?
Yeah, yeah. The one in particular, he's very eager to set foot in the building. So he's like, oh, you know, three or four days. So we'll see. Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have no favorites. I just want whoever can do it. They all seem pretty, you know, well-versed in everything that they do, all union-related. So they're gonna have their own people in here and who they contract out and all that. So it should be pretty smooth. We ain't gonna have to do anything.
All right. What about the 144 requests?
I'll make a motion to approve your request to hire was Ryan and Darcy and Zane, right?
Okay, we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the Maintenance Department's 144 request for the hire of Ryan Brown, Darcy Moore, and Zane Bentley. Any further question? All in favor, signify by a say a aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Take care of that, Josh. Let us know if there's anything else we can do.
All right. Thank you.
County Surveyor Bill Mackey, I know you have something.
Yeah, you guys talked about the road sign inventory last week. You guys said you wanted to go ahead and move forward with it. So I've got the financial commitment from the county for you to sign. That's just what our part will be 10% if we get the funding for the... They gotta do the inventory first. If we get approved for that, the next year I have to apply for the funding for whatever they find, how many, and signs that have to be replaced and whatever. And that'll be 10% matched to, so. You have a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of signs. You'll pay $20,000 to have them done. And they'll have a GIS layer and everything eventually. That way, I would probably get, well, get track of it. Jane, can I have the minutes from last meeting when I talked about this? Because I have turned that in with my application. They want a lot of information. Apply for this. Yeah, just that.
Oh, no.
Just what they, you know, that part of it. That's when they officially were perming, I guess.
Bill, don't we also... You also need a letter of financial commitment from the council?
Yes, I've got that. I can give that to you if you can take care of it. I could not go, we'll be there tonight. I've got some information too that you can give them. An explanation of what it is and stuff. And yeah, I've got that letter.
We can hand that to them this evening and ask them to take it.
Yeah, that'll give it to you after the meeting. But yeah, that's what that is. Get the process started.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve this. This is actually a safety project. This is for the financial commitment letter from Sisfae County to get the signage updated through NDOT. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
To grant opportunity they're offering. I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the letter of financial commitment for the grant application of signage inventory. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by a say a aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jane. Okay, there you go, Dale.
I'll get you... I'll give you a copy.
Send Jane a copy of that so we can have it on record.
All righty.
And you're gonna leave?
Yeah, I've got stuff for you. I'll give it to you after the meeting.
Okay. While you're here, do you have anything you can report to us on Bridge 75?
I can't. So I thought you gotta go back to the Highway Department, do the fix, or I haven't been able to find anybody.
Well, the bridge repairs come under your authority, okay? So we, you know, we've got County Road 450 closed right now because of the condition at the bridge out there. We need to get it fixed. I know, did you talk to Mike?
Yeah, he's too busy right now to get to it.
And he can't do it?
Does anybody else think that we jump on it real quick? I have no idea.
Do you have anybody else in mind that... Well, after the meeting, I've got a list of potential contractors that might be able to do that. It came from one of the guys down at IMI who is aware of a few contractors that do bridge work.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. You might want to contact them, see if we can get one of them on that job. That be okay with you?
Sure.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Veteran service officer Ron Stevens is here. Ron, do you have anything today?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you. County Attorney, do you have anything?
I do not.
Anybody have any mail that we need to share?
I don't.
I better check my notes here. Anyone have anything on their old business? Do we have anything on our new business? Jane, do you have anything for us?
No.
Is there any payment concerns in the room today? Any of you fellows got anything you need to talk about?
I'll just listen, man.
Okay. Derek, you've got anything? All that leaves in is claims and payroll.
Please approve.
Second that.
Another motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, signify by a say a aye. I did forget to mention this Morton Salt contract. Here's something we forgot. It was laying right over here. Jay brought in this contract with Morton Salt. And Jay, could you explain that? That Morton really does make us take more than we need?
No, they asked you how much you figure you're gonna use, but they don't hold you to that amount if you don't use that much. And that's why I shy away from the state. Because they say you have to make up for what you don't use. And so far here, we've used them since I come back from E. Was it 88? Yeah. No, it wasn't 88. 18.
Anyhow, here is the contract agreement. Calling for salt for next year, $84.50 a ton. It'd cost you more than that at Kroger.
Yeah. It does.
Yeah.
Jay, you know what your average is that you use in salt?
Well, our average? Last year, we didn't use hardly any. We used what we had in our stockpile and that was it. We hadn't bought any salt last year. So I said, "I haven't called them or know what was going on or anything." But I'll fix an order or something for this year.
Yeah, that's a little fine.
Prepare for winter coming on.
Yeah. I think it's... I heard it's gonna be a bad winter this year.
Yeah, they're talking about a lot of snow, so we'll see.
So you're gonna get 500 tons.
It ain't gonna hurt my feelings, though. That's what.
It's raining on the phone.
I think we had down... Two years ago, we had down 750 tons. But we cut it to 500 last year because we didn't... We didn't use hardly any of that.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. We've got a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the Highway Department's contract with Morton Salt, ride salt in the County Highway Department for the coming year at $84.50 a ton. Any further question? All in over, the favor, signify by a say a aye. Three ayes, Jane. I'll go ahead and sign that and get this out of the way. I'll go ahead and sign that and get this out of the way.
Yeah, there's a spot.
We forgetting anything?
Sure.
Second.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to adjourn. All in favor, signify, I would say aye. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.